This is February 17, 2015 afternoon work session. Room 315.
School Board members committee assignments.
Normally, part of our reorg and at the first of the year, we go through our committee assignments and look to see and place new board members and whatnot. And I don't think I got an answer from Maureen. In fact, when I sent Maureen the thing on, "Why are you sending me this if I'm not on that executive committee?" I got an email back, she's no longer with us. So I'm like, "Well, now what? I don't know."
On what?
You were on that Community Alliance before. They send me stuff about the steering committee.
Shirley, Sherry Reynolds is on now. We put Sherry Reynolds on in your place.
No, that's something else.
It's not the same.
That is the...
Well, so she, when I spoke to Maureen, she said there's a steering committee and then there's the executive committee. Is Sherry on the steering committee?
You know, I don't know. That Community Alliance, I'd like to know where it comes from and why we have to be on it.
Well, but we went through all this. So, we, there was concern because of the amount of time and when of a school board member.
This is a different one.
Isn't that called the Community Alliance?
That was the Sarasota County Human Services Advisory Committee.
That's different. That's HSEC.
That's not the Community Alliance.
And the Community Alliance, I heard you were on it and then I ended up being on it.
It's the one where you look at all the grant applications?
No, that's...
That's HSEC.
Okay.
That's Sherry Reynolds.
I stand corrected.
So this is this Community Alliance and, you know, I've been getting these, I was going on Mondays. She sits on that too.
Wait, 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 wait. Sherry, is term limited off that? So she's no longer on the Community Alliance?
She was at the last meeting I was at.
Well, then this is her last term.
But...
Are you on the Community Alliance or are you on the...
They were saying they were...
Well, that's, I'd like to know, 'cause I don't even know what, I mean, we were sitting there talking, we were getting reports about the homeless committee and all of that. I'm not sure what the, where the community, our representation on the Community Alliance comes from. Apparently, the HSEC, there was some county ordinance. I don't know what the Community Alliance is.
Yes, it is. Because I got into commission.
Are we required to be on this or is this something you just wanted to be on? And like I said, they were giving me notices about going to the steering committee and then they said, "Oh, you're not on the steering..."
No, it's the executive committee.
Executive committee, whatever.
And she said, "Oh, I think she's on that." And I said, "Okay, hold on."
But we're talking about statutory committee assignments, right? The Community Alliance is not.
That's what I don't know.
Statutory because I got into it with Carolyn Mason and the county commission about why we didn't...
Statutory by which statute? Or just Sarasota County?
Sarasota County.
So they can make us be on a committee?
That's correct.
What if they do if we don't?
I don't know.
Well, we put a school board rep, not a school board member rep.
Because I was like, "Why should a school board member tell a county commission how to spend money?"
I'm not happy, but I'm living with it.
I've been on it before. I'm happy to do it.
It's too time consuming for those town members, but anyway.
So could you find out where the origin of our position on the Community Alliance came from? Who chartered that Community Alliance?
Janice Lee.
Pardon me?
Janice Lee was on the original.
I thought that was the HSEC.
She was on that too.
Well...
Zoe can follow. I'll work with Zoe to figure out if there's a statutory requirements for representation on that.
Well, I also think the, we've got the legislative liaison for the FSBA and what's this district rep that I am? She's that.
And you are the, you are on the board of directors representing Charlotte and Sarasota.
It's a certain district, isn't it?
Yeah, District 23.
So that's a position that District 23, the Board of Directors of the FSBA, it's shared between Sarasota and Charlotte County and we switch...
Every two years.
Back and forth. It's a two-year period. We probably want to, so am I on that for 14 and 15?
Yeah.
Did you get that?
But again, that's not statutory. We're not, so we're talking about all kinds of things.
Well, it's a position that, I'm a voting member representing this board on FSBA.
Do we have a list of statutory committees that we are required to be on?
We've, you've got the value added or value...
Code adjustment.
Value and code adjustment, which is statutory. There really is very few that are statutory.
Is any given child required from the grant?
No, it isn't.
Okay. And what about the workforce development? I mean, that used to be on. Is that a requirement or...
I'm on it, but it's not required.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I don't know when you're supposed to go to the Community Alliance committee before you, I don't know.
I'll look into it and see. They sent, because Maureen sends an email, but she did sign by fill, right? I don't know.
And the tobacco-free partnership is not required, but just...
So you're done with that?
Unless anybody else has anything to throw in. I just wanted to clarify.
I'm gonna wait.
I don't know what this committee is.
I'm gonna wait on number nine until, because I don't see art here. I've got a couple others. I don't know if you all got, I think Shirley, no, I think Zoe forwarded this to the board members about Shirley, oh, not Shirley, Susan, Nylon wanting people to come on her show and speak. This is as far as we've gotten, which is, this is as far as we've got, just a request for, I don't think anybody's talked to her, right?
I went on her show recently and talked about choice.
But I mean, nobody's talked to her, her producer about this request. That's my question, or that's my point.
Say it one more time. So they're trying to have a true revolving...
Well, we're not exactly sure what they're trying to do, but...
I think she wants to try to help us get words out about the school district. I think it's done in a very positive...
So I guess my question is how to, does the board want to move forward with this?
I guess if it's any board, but I think, again, it's, we probably ought to speak for ourselves, not the board.
I think it should be discretion, in my personal opinion, I think it should be discretionary based on individual board member, but that's just...
So rotate through it or have the opportunity to rotate through it? I'll be honest with you, I don't have any interest in doing it.
Are you going on first?
No, I just thought I have no interest in doing it.
What I'm thinking about, are they, we have to make sure that they understand that whoever's speaking is not speaking to the board.
Correct.
Because only you can speak for the board.
Have a disclosure, our opinions aren't my own or something?
Well, I think even as a board chair, to go on there and say something, I think it's a kind of an iffy thing because who knows what questions she's gonna ask and without knowing how the board feels on a certain issue, I mean, you can't just sit there and say, "Well, we haven't taken the position," and that we haven't taken the position.
So then should perhaps, should I contact her and see exactly, just get more information on what she wants to do, what she's thinking about?
It's a community radio show. I've been on three or four times. It's, you know, I've really heard.
Yeah, not all the people listen to it. I responded back that, you know, I would be a happy April and May to...
Okay, well, we'll just let her, we'll just let her do it.
Yeah, you know, so whoever wants it can just contact her. She's just trying to...
She now serves on any given child's oversight committee. And she's really, you know, interested in any way she can get information out about the schools in a positive way. She has a son at Sarasota High School, so she's looking at this being a good community service. It was very timely for me to go on and talk about choice because it's choices open until the 20th, so, or through the end of the day on the 20th. So that was just, you know, very informative and informational, but as I say, it's, you know, sometimes difficult to get that radio station if you're not in the city limits of Sarasota, so I can't get it in South County, so.
So why don't we just leave it at board members can make the contact, tell them what they want.
Yeah.
Good for me.
Thank you.
I had one other and it was just really timely because the invoice came the other day. There was article in the paper this morning, I'm not gonna comment on that particular article, but there was one thing that I thought was either wrong or misleading in that it quoted that FSBA dues are $3,000. Because FSBA, and I haven't even given, so, I mean, I just did just get it. FSBA dues are $21,766.
That wasn't my call, I thought 18.
I don't think that was a...
$21,000 a year?
Our dues are $21,766. I'm saying the article said our dues were $3,000. And I did talk to the reporter, emailed the reporter, she said she was trying to split it up into individual, how much it would be. I just thought it was very misleading.
Oh, but five board member, she was dividing it?
Right. But it said FSBA dues are $3,000 a year, which they're not doing.
Divided by actual student population versus...
Do you have that ever? And it also said your new association dues are $99 a month.
There, yeah, well, and I was gonna bring it up, but just quickly, just share, because I know everyone's aware of it, and by no means is it intended to be a cause of contentious issue. It's just another resource for school board members around the state to utilize and discuss, you know, something that you said one time about, when we were discussing FSBA and the benefit it brought to you, was that when you came on as a new board member, you know, they kind of said, "Figure it out," I think is what you said. So this is just another outlet to reach out and with, from other school board members in around Florida, discuss some of the challenges that we face in the, in our respective counties or beyond, and that is just that. So it's not a replacement, it's not intended to cause a rift, because that's not obviously my goal, I don't want to, I wanna make sure we have a good, strong working, you know, relationship, and I appreciate any of the comments you said, because we're not gonna allow that to get in the way, because that's certainly not, that's not the purpose at all, so.
We have the consortium, the Greater Consortium of Florida School Boards, we have the Central Consortium, we have this small district consortium, so we have several consortiums throughout the state.
And just another one, another option, I guess. Choice seems to be a readily main topic for me, I guess, so that's all.
But it seemed like one of the main issues was over the lawsuit that FSBA had to take.
That was a part of it and that, you know, to discuss another time if you'd like, but I think that there was a part of the undertone of support that maybe had caused it, but I think there were a variety of things that led to...
Well, I would hope that you would stay open to, I mean, because attending one FSBA meeting, I don't think does...
Of course, no, and I understand that, and I convalued that, but I also, again, met a lot of people and it was just seemed to be something that people were wanting, so we just moved forward with it, so. And it's up to individual board members to join, it's not a board as a whole, so if it seems like a resource to anyone around the state or in this room, then I encourage you to sign up. Look it up.
Any other others?
Well, Lori's on.
Because I'm not gonna ask again after Art's done. So you got one other. You got one opportunity for other.
All right, hang on.
You already got, you already tricked me this morning when I said if there's anything else on that subject and then you all started again, so.
Well, you gave us a break there. You're the last handle there. I was just curious about what Lori thinks about the start date, changing the start date. You see that, Lori?
Start date of what?
School, that, you're going to be able to change it to 21 days before...
Whoa, a proposal.
There's a proposal, but I was just curious.
Okay, hold that thought, because Art's here and I don't want...
No, you said I can't...
No, that's because we were waiting on, that's, we were waiting for...
All right, I was for 1:30.
With what Art charges, we don't wanna keep it one more minute longer than we have to.
Appreciate that, I can help keep you moving.
And this had, this had to do with the email we got from Art and again, and certainly was part of the discussion at the last board meeting about putting items on the agenda and making sure that we're doing it properly and legally and that there, that things are being noticed properly.
Well, I, you know, obviously I was there too as conversations were going on and I, I knew that that was raising issues, but I didn't wanna jump in and, until I was sure of my facts on things, so I went and, you know, did the research and I basically told you all what I know in that memo. I think that'd be certainly a very defensible and prudent way to go forward is to have things put on the agenda. I think that the superintendent in the first instance is in charge of the agenda because of, and we've talked about this in the past, you know, Florida law with school boards vis a vis superintendent rights is a little odd, you know, compared to, at least it's different compared to other governments.
Like a board accounting commissioner.
Like board accounting commissioners or city commissions, or it's just, it's just a different animal and my explanation for that is that I assume it's because superintendents are constitutional officers who still today in most districts are elected, and that can cause, cause some issues, and that's why there's on a variety of topics, some cases about superintendents and school boards and who has what right to do what. So I think that the most, there are of course some things that the board can just do, deal with the superintendent, deal with the lawyer, set your boundaries of where you live, that you don't need recommendations for. But for most things, the statutes talk about acting on the superintendent's recommendation. I don't think that can mean that the school board in the absence of, you know, if you have a superintendent who just said, "Well, I'm not doing anything about that," I don't think that leaves you with no, no options. I think you can, because one of the things you can do on your own is give direction to your direct reports, who are the two of us basically, that you can direct that a recommendation be brought, and then that gives the superintendent the opportunity to weigh in. That gives then the board the opportunity to react to that. Doesn't mean you have to agree with the recommendation, but it's start, that's the starting point for you. It also...
What does generally we do in a workshop setting?
Right. I mean, you can do it informally and say, "Bring this," but if for whatever reason you didn't get a recommendation, then I think you could have a formal direction at a board meeting. And it has the, the other, I guess, salutary effect of, then it's also on an agenda to the extent the world cares. The world knows about it. If people want to talk about it, they can, they have the opportunity to do that, so I think it's just the safest way to go, both from a public participation standpoint and from the superintendent having her prerogative to also weigh in.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In order to, and I may, this may be my perception and maybe is incorrect, in order to move, put something on the agenda, do we need a majority in, on the board to have it put on the agenda? Because I thought, I've seen that, but even if you weren't going to vote on or agree on, you know, the way that someone's present, you know, asking to have it put on the agenda item, I, it has appeared that it almost is like we need at least three or more people to put the item on.
Well, I think, I think there are two. First, the superintendent can put something on the agenda.
Right.
If the board wants to give the direction, put superintendent, "We want your recommendation on X to be on the agenda," then I think that would be a vote that three of you would have to agree to.
And that's typically done in a workshop setting, but we're not really voting at workshops, correct? Are you suggesting we would do that at an actual...
I'm suggesting that you, I guess, probably the easiest way to do it in the first instance is at a workshop and for the superintendent to see if people, if that's what people wanted, she could, because she doesn't need any direction, I mean, 99% of things that are on the agenda are just things she puts on the agenda.
Right.
If for whatever reason a board member, you know, a board member thought that there was a consensus that something be put on the agenda and it doesn't show up the next time, then I think you could vote at a board meeting. I move that we direct the superintendent to place the issue of X on the agenda at the next school board meeting.
What, what, what point is that done?
And where do you bring that up?
I think you bring that up.
New business?
I think that could be, yeah, part of new business or at the conclusion of new business.
But perhaps even as soon as the board member knows they wanna do that, it should be noticed by, no, I mean, we know what's on the agenda.
Right.
I mean, would we be prohibited from saying, "Wait, wait a minute, superintendent, you didn't put my thing out there, could you put it under new," I mean, rather than just bringing it up out of the blue, I mean, shouldn't we have it noticed?
Yes.
Or, or are we just saying that all we can do there is to say, "Put it on the agenda"?
I think certainly in a workshop, you can have a conversation that obviously involves the superintendent and she can get the sense of the board that something should be placed on the agenda, or, you know, whether, and obviously there's not a formal vote here, but then she can put it on the agenda. If she doesn't, as a result of that, the way that you can make that happen as a board is to give that direction at a board meeting.
To be on the following.
To be on the following agenda.
So then you have the...
So I think with the notice issue, with the notice issue, you're getting that because it's gonna be on, I mean, the actual consideration of the substance of whatever it is you're talking about will be on a board agenda. It's possible somebody can just, I mean, you don't have to bring it up at a workshop, I can't tell you to do that.
No, but I can honestly say, in my 14 years and four superintendents, I have never seen a superintendent refuse to put something that the majority of the board wanted.
Well, I would, I would expect that, I would expect that's what would happen.
And that's what my question was, so you need the majority of the board in order to do it?
Yeah, because, because a board member or a minority of board members can't, can't put something on the agenda, that's what one of those, that's what those case, that case was about, where one board member sued the board in Miami-Dade and the judge, at least that judge said, but it's the only opinion we have from a court, that judge said, "No, it's up to the superintendent to bring that forward." What I'm suggesting is, you don't just have to sit around and wait for the superintendent to do that, I think you can give her a direction to do that.
If the three of, because the reality is, if you don't have three votes, why on earth are you gonna put it on the agenda unless you just wanna stand up on, on your podium and complain about something? I mean, they're just, that's just the practical, practical thing.
I mean, I see it differently slightly, because I think there are circumstances, and this is probably not very common, but where regardless if we agree or not, it would make sense that you go on record as to how you feel about a certain issue, whether...
Well, and you certainly, I mean, and you certainly can do that in, first, by saying so, or by making the motion to put it on the agenda, and if that doesn't garner three votes, it's still out there. I mean, that, that's out there. And also, the superintendent can exercise her discretion to put things on, I mean, I think if she's directed to do it by a majority of the board, she's gonna do it, that'd be my guess, but, you know, there are times, other times, 99% of times things aren't directed and are there anyways.
You don't want one board member and legal, you know, the legal reference you gave us, you don't want one board member having control of an agenda.
Correct. I think that's the...
But at the same time too, though, even if, you know, we don't agree and we're looking at a workshop or whatever, I thought there was something, you know, maybe this is something we learned in boardmanship class, is that we then come together, you know, like say, whether or not to support the referendum. If that vote is three to two, you know, the board voted to support the referendum, the schools, you know, that, the two no votes wouldn't have to actually go out there and, you know, wave signs, you know, "I want this referendum," but we would hope that those board members wouldn't go out and work against the actions that were taken at the board, because then they, I mean, I thought that was part of the agreement, so that...
Well, that's, I mean, that's...
Good boardmanship.
Not a legal issue, that's everybody's business, I guess.
I have a good thing that happened. A couple of months ago, I brought up the issue of the sale of circus and extending the lease from 42 years to 100 years. Well, I left here under the impression that we agreed to do it, because nobody cared whether it was done or not. So if you don't care whether it's done or not, so then I thought you were going to do it. I didn't see it on the agenda, I didn't see it on the agenda, I didn't see it on the agenda. I came back in and brought it up again as an issue and realized you all didn't, while you didn't care, you really didn't want it to extend the lease. But that happens. And I talked to Lori and Lori said, "I didn't get the impression that three board members wanted to extend the lease." So that's, so we had another discussion on it and that's when I realized that you all didn't want to do it.
Do we have any more, any more questions for Art? Since we're taking his time?
No.
Well, the, the one question was if in fact we were to go and say, superintendent didn't wanna put it on and we wanted to put it on anyway, we could, we could move to put it on, or someone could move to put it on, but I would imagine that motion would, if it wasn't gonna pass, would die on a three to two vote anyway, but that should be done before the announcement, shouldn't it, at the, at the end of new business?
I mean, I think it can be, I think it can be done as part of, after new business, as part of comments. I don't know that we've really tried to separate comments from announcements, I suppose you could if you wanted to, but, I mean, I think it would just, that would be the time to bring it up. And I suppose, one of three things can happen. One, it won't get a second, and then that's that. Two, it does get a second and it gets voted down and that's that. Or three, it gets approved, in which case I would expect to see some recommendation on new business next time, which the board could then either adopt, reject, or modify.
Well, what I would like to see, and I would like to know about it before it happens, I think it's whether, no matter who's doing it, I think it's pretty poor judgment to bring it up at the end of the board meeting, whenever, when I'm ready to adjourn, it comes out of nowhere, irregardless of what, irregardless of what...
I agree.
I agree.
Well, you know, again, that's, I think a board member has a right to bring up a motion, so I can't tell you not to do that. I think you can have the kind of understanding, if you want to, that something should be brought up in a workshop first, and even if it doesn't garner support, somebody can still bring forward the motion, but that way it's not a surprise to everybody else. But, I mean, board members also have a right to do that if they want to.
Whatever we can do, whatever we wanna do, really.
And I guess where I differ, and maybe I'm not getting the clear answer, is whether you're going to vote to approve it or not, if, I would say respectfully, if I don't necessarily agree with someone, but you want it to be put on the agenda to, for the community to see how our people stand on, for whatever the reason, I don't see that everything we vote on needs to be a five zero vote, I guess. That's where we really differ, so.
It doesn't have to be a five zero vote, but if somebody puts something out there knowing that the board has voted against it, it's like a grandstand, it's like you really want to garner more support, that you're looking to the community, for the community to say, "Oh, what a great person she is." I'm being serious now. Because that's what it looks like, because it's already appeared, it's been voted down, then it's brought up again, and it's voted against again, so you bring it up again.
But it wasn't really voted on, I guess is where I'm having that substance problem. I mean, if we're officially there to, and then that's where process wise, discussion in a workshop, mentioned at the DIA's to have a request to bring it forward to the following meeting, that was declined because it didn't have a majority, I guess.
Right.
And so I...
We might need this one.
Well, I guess that's what's brought it up, so, I mean, it's the big elephant in the room, I don't mind talking about it directly, so...
There were two.
But with that said, I, I completely understand the need for having noticed for both board members and the public. I think that's incredibly important, I don't want to diminish that, because it's valid. I would just say as a group, when we talk about working together, when we do discuss things in a workshop, you know, maybe I don't essentially 100% agree with that we need a majority of all on the same page, but a majority of respectfully approving something to go on the agenda, whether we disagree on the item or not, I guess. That's all. That's all.
But if we waste our time with a lot of issues that aren't going to get approved, that really don't meet the standard of being a new business or being a motion, I mean, you look at some other districts, Bridget, and you see 12-hour board meetings or eight-hour board meetings, and, and we've always tried to be very succinct here and workshop a lot of things, flesh out a lot of issues, come to some kind of agreement, and then put it on the board agenda. And I think the place for some of this dialogue that you're talking about is in the workshop environment, not at the board table.
Because the reality is, if you don't have three votes, you're wasting your time.
That's correct.
That's a regular occurrence by any means, but I'm glad we're clarifying.
But I mean, you're new on board and it's becoming a regular occurrence that you have this issue with it, so we need to at least come to some kind of an agreement or understanding of it. And, and we have always prided ourselves in having efficiently run board meetings and... and, and not taken, you know, hours, I, I mean, we've tried to have presentations that are meaningful to the public. Students come in and, and perform and do presentations to the public and put a lot of emphasis on that, but also emphasis on efficient and backward.
And I want to be clear, I, my intention of bringing the master board workshop up at the board meeting wasn't really to get a vote on it. It was to show that our board meetings can deteriorate if we just throw these things up at the end of this thing. And, and in fact, you know, looking from where we were, we might have had three votes for it, I mean, from what we had in the discussion, but the discussion in the workshop showed that we didn't have unanimous support for it. And if everybody isn't going to be there, it's not worth going. I mean, you defeat the purpose anyway. So I just wanted to show that, yeah, we do just deteriorate our board meetings and we just get into these discussions. And, you know, so I, I agree that we have to have the, the rules and procedures and how we put things on, on the agenda.
Process?
Yeah, process.
Well, I, I've tried to lay out what I think is kind of the middle ground between the board can do anything anytime and the board can't do anything unless the superintendent does it in a way that's, that respects both kind of seats of power. But what you all agree to as far as how you get to that point is really not a legal matter, that's.
Right.
That's up to what you, what you all.
Well, that's our boardmanship.
Yeah. And ultimately, any one of you can bring up such a motion, whether you tell anybody you're going to or you're not, or whether you had a discussion about it or not. So that's, each of you have that ability to bring, to bring a motion. I'm just suggesting the motion should be one to direct the superintendent so that you go through that process as opposed to just doing it.
And I don't disagree, I mean, with the process because I do believe it. And I, I think the important part is truly having the board and the community having the awareness of what we're discussing. I think that's incredibly important, so.
Thank you, Art.
Thanks, Art.
Thanks, Art.
Two of the three.
In that same vein, not that we need Art here, we were given the school board operating procedures and it said board members should not respond to hearing of citizens. I think we had kind of an awkward moment when that contractor was there and normally Lori might have asked Scott to go out there and talk to him, but, but I would like to have an understanding that the superintendent will direct staff to work with him or what?
You did, but you know, you need to know that either whenever a hearing of citizens, if you want to state it just for the public, I get that too, but we follow up if there's an, if typically it's an issue we're already aware of. Many times if I think somebody is going to come to the board, I will, I've got one that may happen today, so I will be talking individually just so you know what it is so you don't react to the situation, so you can have some background. So we always handle, we always, if it's something that we're not aware of, I followed up. Scott informed the board of the follow-up. I think he did. So, yeah, those, those will be taken care of.
But what I don't want to do is air the grievance.
That is right. That, and you, or get into a debate or a question.
Right.
Or put me in a position where you're asking me.
To do something.
To, well, not to do something else, but to state what the situation is.
Right, that's right.
Because that could also be infringing on other people's rights by ask, putting me in that position, but saying that I know that the superintendent would have some follow-up, I mean, that's always.
So you're saying that they don't always tell us both sides of the issue.
They don't. I just think about that.
Could, could we include in, or maybe when they come up that, you know, it, we don't, we don't, suspect staff either has or will follow up?
That's fine. I'm comfortable with that to make that statement.
You know, because the, the public doesn't see. The public doesn't know.
I, I appreciate.
But if we somehow say as, as chair that, you know, we, we make it a policy not to engage in discussion at this time, but that staff either has or will follow up with.
That's the good idea.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's, and Frank, you did that well, but I totally, I agree because.
Yeah, but, but there was that awkward pause until you did.
Only for you.
And on the, if you don't want.
And I kept my mouth shut.
On passing procedures, I, you know, this is kind of, I'm not trying, it's not trying to be too detail oriented or so, but the, underneath Board Office Correspondent's email, I know I mentioned this to you, you typically, if all board members are addressed, you respond to them, I would assume. So I know, and this is not frequent, but sometimes you'll have someone in the community say, well, you emailed everybody and I haven't heard back. I don't know, I know we're limited with sunshine, if there's certain issues that's going to come across the board, but is there any ideas or way that we can keep each other abreast at the?
You can respond if you want.
No, what you're talking about like in, on an email, well, let me just tell you what my preference would be, and certainly you all, you can, and some of you do, respond individually. So I forward those to the appropriate staff person always, when it comes to me or when you forward something that didn't come to me. I forward to the appropriate staff. Staff knows that in the response, unless it's an issue where there's confidentiality, if it's a student discipline issue, that they should copy board members on the response. So there's a few times when that is not permitted just for the nature of it, if it's disciplinary issues. So, but you also have to know that sometimes there's some time for that to occur. In this case of the more recent, I mean, there was a little investigation, you had to, and we had to get ahold of law enforcement and get records, we had to interview the person involved and so it was being dealt with, it wasn't just as fast. And when you look, really look at business days, it wasn't that many more days and the, and the individual had been responded to the very same day initially that they had received it, they would be following up. So there had been contact, it just, the follow-up was not timely in this particular, the most recent particular situation.
And I'm using it as a general.
No, and I'm, and I'm just giving you those kinds of, so, so if you get another one, then certainly I also would send that to the appropriate staff member and check in terms of the timeliness. But generally, we, the rule is that I give staff, you are, and sometimes a complaint that might come to me alone, never go to you. And when it goes to board members, they are to copy you in the response so you know this was the follow-up. And these are done generally directors and executive directors, except in the case where it's, there's confidentiality and then they don't use email particularly as a mechanism because many times those are phone dialogues that we don't put things in writing. We try to, with student discipline, we try to restrict the email.
Right. And so I, and I think when it's individual, so when it's all board members, we'll just assume it's being forwarded to you.
Yes, and you can ask me on your, on our one-on-ones, can I get a, I don't know, a follow-up. Sometimes that's helpful for me is saying, you know, I haven't heard either, I'll, I'll see where we are with that. So feel free so to question me if you want to know what the outcome is, that's also fine.
And it's not the purpose, I'm not trying to micromanage, it's nearly, you know, you get that moment where someone comes up to you and says, oh, I emailed everyone or I said, I reached out to everyone on the board and I haven't heard anything yet, so it's just a way to keep us.
Well, on those things, Bridgette, I'll, because it usually comes to all, all of us anyway, I will respond if I feel like they really want a response. Sometimes they don't want a response, they just want to complain, but anybody's, I mean, Shirley's really good about responding for me, so it doesn't make too much difference. What I don't want to see though, quite seriously, is I don't want to see other people's response.
Right, you don't want to reply, oh.
Exactly.
Well, I don't want it, yeah, I don't want it sent, you know, I just don't want to see what, you know, see what y'all's response is because I don't think it's appropriate given what the law.
I have somebody who sends me an email about something directly, I will always answer it, usually in the same day that I get it. And if it's only sent to me and they know me and they've asked me a question that may have to do with something and I know where to go in the district to find it or to get help, I will do that.
Yeah.
I had that happen the other day and, and got an answer two days after and that was perfectly timely for that individual, you know, we figured that.
I do the same thing.
No, I forward it to you more, predominantly no, but anyhow, that was all.
Any other other? I didn't get to yours, Caroline. We, I promised you.
Oh, the 21 days.
You could come back to the opening of school.
Yes. That would be helpful in terms of making it more possible to complete the first semester prior to the winter break if it was 21 days. There is also an issue that I believe hits next year where the start of school will, if you, on the current law, which puts the 14 days before Labor Day is really, is like a week later than this year. Because for whatever reason, Labor Day in Idaho, it's the latest Labor Day can be, so it makes it the latest the school to start. So that's, that's going to, they need to fix that because that's unusually late. We're hoping that gets fixed. This would be not only fixing that situation to make it more aligned to this school year, but also in the future, make it an earlier start date possible that makes it more somewhat possible. It's still a crunch to try to get enough days, enough hours before the winter hot break to be able to complete the first semester.
But testing would also be done before the winter break, right?
The EOC, just the EOC for, and the retakes. There's a, just a little bit of testing that's done at first semester. It's Algebra I on a block and your retakes on the F cap, grade 10.
I have another.
Dr. Stowe.
The weekly talks with the lobbyists, one person can sit in on them. I think it's kind of important to see what's happening. Would that be our legislative liaison or is there somebody else that wants to? And then the, I ran into Senator Dieter from the public and she asked for a one-page.
And then I responded to you. Did you get my email?
Unless you did it today, I didn't get it.
No, I gave it Friday. It was, I had a list ready to go and looked at Senator Monford's bill, which hits every single one of my items now.
Did you send it to everyone, no? Did you send it?
I thought I did.
Yeah, I think so. No, I recall.
I think so, that was my, that was to be.
It referenced Senator Dieter in that, in the one-page.
Yes, so that was Shirley, that was my intention is to let you know that, because there's no sense in having a list that then has to be translated into a bill when it's already a proposed bill.
That makes it easy.
So that's, that is, so I thought I had.
I thought you were working on something else besides most of those bills, I was thinking.
Yes, so Senator Monford's, from my perspective, if I had my wish list of things that needed to be changed, they are all in that bill. And then I also said, just on the other issue, sorry.
You're going to regret this.
I know. That I'm, they are sending updates, the lobbyists, so I'll send all of that out. Joy Frank is also now sending and hers are very good as well on the bills, because you don't want to know all the bills or that's, you want to know those that are take, getting traction and where they're at. Analysis of comparison of some of the bills. So as, so there's a lot more now starting to be in writing and I will be sending that, everything I get, I will forward to all board members so that you will get an update.